Good evening. It is Monday, February 13th. This is the Guilford Board of Education. This is our regular meeting for February. First item on the agenda is to invite you to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We have a couple of minutes, meeting minutes, to approve here. We've got a pile. The first meeting minutes, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the minutes from our Monday, January 9, 2023 meeting. So moved. Second. All right. Thank you. Questions? Corrections? I was not at this meeting, but I did have a question on page four. I noticed under 9.31 and 9.32, it looks like perhaps the regulation and policy numbers were getting mixed up a little bit. So for instance, under 9.31, Mrs. Peck noted that the new policy and regulation number 5002, but then at the end of that paragraph, regulation 4178 refers to the workplace. Are those, can I assume those are all supposed to be talking about each other within a given paragraph? Or no?
The policy and the regulation. I don't have notes on that with me.
Where are we looking?
I'm sorry. Page four, January 9, meeting minutes, 9.3. There are references to different regulations under a discussion of a given policy, and I didn't know if that was intentional or...
There were multiple policies. Oh, I see where you showed like 9.34. The heading says 5004, and then the contents is...
If there was a discussion of multiple things at once, again, I was not at the meeting, so I don't want to make a correction to something if it's all making sense to everyone else.
Should we table this, Jason, and allow you to go through those, make sure they're accurate, and bring it back at the next meeting?
Okay.
Good idea.
Excellent. So we're going to table, thank you, table the approval of the January 9 minutes. Can I have a motion to approve the January 12, 2023 special meeting minutes?
Some move.
Is there a second? Thank you. Second, Mr. Delventura. Any comments or corrections on these minutes?
It's a small thing, but on page three, the one, two, three, four, fifth paragraph, in response to a comment by Dr. Bellis, Jason, Dr. Freeman explained that having positions like lunch and monitors, is that just lunch, eat monitors, or lunch and recess monitors?
I think it was lunch and recess monitors.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
Yes. Thank you. Just insert the word monitors, recess rather, right in front of monitors. Thank you.
I was just going to note, at the very bottom, the third date mentioned for upcoming meetings should be Tuesday, January 24.
Right. Four got dropped.
Yep. I also had on page two, at the very top, this is part of Dr. Freeman's budget presentation, "A graph of special education costs, including transportation, tuition, and contracted services, indicating that these costs are more level," I think we want to insert "with budget projections" than in the past.
Unless we just change the word "level" to "stable."
Excellent. Okay, that's right. I may be misunderstanding the intent.
Yeah, we've, they're less volatile, so I think if we replace the word "level" with "stable," that will capture my meaning. Thank you.
Excellent. Anything else in these minutes? All right. So we have a motion and a second, all in favor of approving with these corrections the January 12 meeting minutes. All right. Excellent. All right. That's everybody. Okay. I'm not beating. January 23, 2023, Budget Forum Minutes, is there a motion to approve?
Some move.
Second.
All right. I had under number two on the first page, public forum for input on fiscal year '22, '23 budget. I had corrections, suggested corrections to several of the bullets. I wrote them out. I provided them to Terry. I'll just briefly walk through them now. The second bullet, and I did provide one to all my colleagues here, the second bullet was to cross out text that came from Dr. Freeman's presentation and his discussion of the Portrait of the Graduate and identify what I talked about, which was the six areas of the Portrait of the Graduate that are identified. A change to bullet seven, which notes that I talked about the fact that the overall budget, sorry, salaries are 59% of the overall budget and staff benefits are 20%. Change to bullet eight, which identifies the fact that positions, in terms of investments for positions, the positions added unbudgeted in the last year to meet enrollment creases for several classes and other needs, because I wanted to communicate that those positions existed, so while they're investments in the budget, they're not all being added. And lastly, a change to the 10th bullet, which is actually on the second page, striking out the last sentence most districts outperform and identifying what I'd said was, "While per pupil spending ranks them in the middle of school districts across the state." So, thank you for your patience on that. Is there, are there any other corrections to the January 23 minutes? All right. Hearing none. We have a motion and a second, all in favor of approving these minutes as amended. Okay. That's everyone. Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the January 24 Public Forum Meeting Minutes?
Some move.
Second.
Any corrections to these minutes?
The, on, let's see. The second bullet, Public Forum, the gentleman's name is Ken Alberti, not Ned Alberti, at 100 Trail Wood Drive.
This is very minor, but the very, very top, it was a Tuesday, January 24th was a Tuesday. Any other questions? I think probably most challenging, although Terry can tell me differently, to take minutes with multiple people coming up in public forums, so thank you so much for trying to track all that. So I have a motion and a second, all in favor of approving the Tuesday, January 24 Public Hearing Meeting Minutes as amended. Please say aye.
Aye.
I abstained because I wasn't...
And, okay, and Ms. Rader is abstaining. Everyone else is approving. And then lastly, the January 31 Special Meeting Minutes, is there a motion to approve?
Some move.
Second.
Second. Any comments or corrections on these minutes?
Page three, numerical issue. Fifth paragraph, talking about the budget for site improvements, it lists a target budget of $5 million. It should be $500,000.
Hmm. Thank you. Any other?
Yeah.
Paul was hoping you didn't notice that one.
Do a lot with that.
Any other corrections? No? All right. So we have a motion and a second, all in favor of approving the Tuesday, January 31 Meeting Minutes as amended. Please say aye.
Aye.
All right. That's everybody. Thank you. Okay. Public Forum for topics on the board agenda only. We actually don't have anyone here joining us tonight, so we will move on then to review and approval of expenditures for the month. Ms. Wagner.
We just had our Board of Finance meeting, or Operations meeting, sorry, not Board of Finance, and we reviewed the expenditures for the month of January in detail and the individual warrants at that meeting. But just to give some highlights, the expenditures for the month of January were $5,696,664.37. The expenditures and encumbrances through the end of January were 54.7% up the budget as compared to 55.88 in the previous year. The revenue we had for the month of January was $5,667.50 for Medicaid and also $11,080 for pre-K tuition. The total warrants we're submitting for the month listed, were listed ethically on the warrant page, and the total payments listed were $2,518,868.2.
Excellent. Thank you. As noted, these were discussed in the Operations Committee just prior to this, but I'll give a moment for any further comments or questions, if anyone has them. None? All right. Is there a motion to approve the financial reports for January 2023?
Some move.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. That's everybody. Thank you. Communications. Does anybody have communications to share? I actually have one. It's kind of a communication. I was asked last week to visit a Baldwin Middle School sixth grade classroom where they were doing persuasion, I guess persuasion papers, and they were studying adolescent sleep patterns and school start times. And I got to attend. I had four students present to me, three of them in favor of considering a later school start time for students at Baldwin Middle School, and one student cautioning against that. So I did want to share a couple of highlights. I'm then going to share the notes with all of you, and we are going to be getting individual letters, I believe, from each of the students in the class, once the teacher, Ms. Cutler, has collected them. But one of the, the first student thought that Baldwin Middle School's start time should be 30 minutes later. It would give students more sleep. It would improve physical and mental health. Students would be more focused. It would increase attendance and could increase grades. And I will note that a lot of the students were referencing research that they'd done. The second student noted, school start times should be later, actually noted that Dr. Kinopary, who of course we have worked with on the board on this issue, noted that it can impact memory, and Lawrence Epstein has noted increased attendance and some increase in grades. The third student noted, again, later school start times, students can fall asleep in class if the start times are too early, may not get the needed eight to 10 hours of sleep, may be sleeping in class and then do less well. Class should not start before 8:30, and that not getting enough sleep is actually bad for both mental health and health, and also noticed that, noted that sleep deprivation is bad for driving. And then lastly, the fourth student cautioned against later school start times, noted the complication of scheduling for after-school activities, noticed the complication of, for parents around moving schedules, suggested that kids might then just stay up later, and really did, regardless of the argument, encourage parents to talk to their children about the importance of sleep. So I had these four presentations and then was able to stay in the classroom for about 30 minutes and have a discussion. I shared with the students our experience with addressing this exact issue, I want to say like seven, six, seven years ago maybe, and that, and we talked about the challenges of, of addressing an issue like this when you have an organization and you have everything from busy schedules and after-school activities and athletics, and we talked about buses, et cetera. It was terrific, and it was so nice to be asked to come, and I, I told them, I was given when I sat down, paper and a pen, so I could take notes, and I, I told them I would share that with, with all of you. So I just wanted to share that.
Dr. Bellis, not coincidentally, the state has empaneled a statewide task force to look at the topic of school start times, not district by district, but at a state level. And on February 27, Mr. Bowden is going to be joining that task force to talk about our experience with that topic and the work that we put into that topic here in Guilford.
Well, that's terrific, because I did know, I did note to the students that we had had a member of the public come to us within the last couple of meetings, asking us to revisit and rethink. And one of the things I talked to the students about was the fact that one proposed solution to this problem of things like scheduling, kids who have work schedules but part, after school, but particularly athletics, all those events that doing it school by school or district by district is really challenging, but if it were to happen at the state level, those parts of the complication would be eliminated. So they will be glad to hear, well, some of the students, because it was a great conversation. There were some students who warned against it. It was, it was a great conversation.
Difficult topic even for sixth graders.
Absolutely. All right.
I actually had two additional communications to share.
Terrific. Are you going to take as long as I did just?
I love talking. So they were both in relation to just access at recess to getting kids, it seemed to be a theme of green versus the blacktop. So two different parents, one was relating the inability to get off the court to some of the behaviors that they might be seeing in other students and just a need for kids to get out and access those fields. And then another parent specifically said, like, you know, I think there's been a lot of work done to make the Baldwin outdoor space more appealing to the kids, but something about accessing those fields and that hill, I think it's something we've heard before. I think it just would be nice to hear a little bit more follow-up, again, as to how and when and why this might be.
Well, and it's interesting, since I was at Baldwin, I actually, the principal, Mr. Hamel, had the opportunity to talk to me a little bit about those are some discussions that are happening. So he is certainly aware of them. And, you know, we didn't have a chance to talk in detail, but no doubt there are considerations that have to happen on all sides.
Yeah, I've been part of those conversations with Mr. Hamel and Mr. Ross. I'd be happy to either invite them or bring information from them to you at a future meeting.
That's great.
Excellent. All right. Student representatives, how are you guys tonight?
Good.
Excellent. Love to hear what you have to share.
So at A W Cox, they celebrated their 100th day of school on Friday. They are now in their second semester, as all of us are, and they are continuing to watch the students' academic and social emotional progress throughout this coming semester. Their focus for the month of February is love, belonging, and inclusion, and I'm very excited to see how that goes. At Adams, they have just begun a school-wide spirit and community building event that will carry them through February and March. They renamed their teams, which I actually did find out last week, but they are by color and engaging in fun team-building and spirit activities by team. This week, or each week, students are focusing on one aspect of the Adams Cares, Community, Attitude, Respect, Effort, and Scholarship. Or this week's focus is on community. In a special, quote, "win class," students and staff discuss aspects of positive communities and what improvements we can make in their Adams, Adams community. Teachers and staff are looking to kind of catch students demonstrating these positive characteristics of community. Next week, they will be again focusing on attitude. Today, after school, students competed in a three versus three basketball tournament, and the winners will play against the teachers on Friday in a fun all-school assembly. Students will wear their new team colors and engage in fun activities for team and school spirit. They also just begun their third quarter and second semester, and spring sports will be starting next month. At Guilford High School, we had our gala night at the beginning of, at the beginning of January. It went really well. I presented mine, as well as I got to watch, see a couple other students. I got to see a really, really cool fashion show. A couple of students did kind of like a science fair, table-ish kind of thing. It was really interesting. The musical is also underway right now, with students across the Guilford High School community helping, from ranging from costumes and design to makeup to acting. And tomorrow, the National Honor Society is hosting, we're hosting our carnation sale, where the last, or the past couple of weeks, we've been trying to sell carnations, and we are going to, whatever the money that we make, we're giving it to a certain charity. And I believe, right now, we are looking at a charity for cancer, I believe leukemia, but don't hold me to that, because there is a student in Guilford, a sophomore, I believe she is, who has cancer, and one of the members of the National Honor Society mentioned that that would be a good organization to donate to.
Great.
Okay. And then at Guilford Lakes, in the last couple of weeks, they've had a couple visitors, some of them most fun visitors, where they had a couple meteorologists. I think a student from a, from a local college came and talked to them about natural disasters and showed them about different instruments and things like that, that they use. They had some fossil hunters that came and brought real-life fossils, so all the kids got to hold a real-life dinosaur bone. And then the Niantic Children's Museum came and talked to them some more about fossils and sediment and got to show them how pressure builds up to sort of preserve those fossils. At the end of January, they had their Winter Wonderland Ball and a very successful food drive that they, I don't remember where they donated, I think it was at the Guilford Food Bank. And then at Melissa Jones, the first graders just went to the planetarium at Mystic Seaport, and they also had a meteorologist from WTNH to talk about weather, natural disasters, and instruments. And I just wanted to add on, at the Guilford High School, we, there's a lot of musical festivals and things like that happening. We have a concert this Wednesday to benefit Meals on Wheels. They had the big jumbo sixth grade, eighth grade wind ensemble concert last week.
Yeah, last week.
Last week. The fencing and hockey teams, I think, are two of the teams that are doing really well this season, and then like what Ruby said, the musicals in full tilt. So that's exciting.
At Baldwin, all students participate in either band, chorus, or orchestra, and in addition to the benefits of learning about music, these experiences give students the opportunity to be a part of a group larger than themselves and work together to achieve a common goal. On February 1, both the fifth and sixth grade orchestra performed both day and evening concerts, and on the 8th, both the fifth and sixth grade chorus performed day and evening concerts. This coming February 15, the fifth and sixth grade bands will perform. They're proud of the rich music program operating Guilford. Moreover, after-school clubs at Baldwin are in full swing. The winter-spring sessions of after-school clubs are going to begin in late February. Some of the clubs on offer are Drama Club, Art Club, Makers Club, Hiking Club, and much more. And over the last several weeks, Baldwin has been contacted by three different school districts in Connecticut who have been interested in learning more about Baldwin's instructional schedule. So far, Baldwin has participated in Zoom meetings and hosted in-person visits with two districts, and they're happy to share the student-centered schedule and approach with these schools. It's been very flattering to have the schools and districts around the state look at them as an exemplar of effective scheduling at the fifth to sixth grade level. Moving on to Calvin Lee, the Calvin Lee Student Council, led by teachers Nikki Israel and Amanda Ricchio, has been focusing on student advocacy and tackling school-wide issues. For example, after recognizing that many kids simply throw away perfectly good food at lunch, they have started to develop a share table in the cafeteria to help eliminate food waste. Students in the second grade began learning about large numbers and estimation recently. To help with this, they played a fun game of guessing how many interlocking rings were in a bucket. After guessing, they put every single ring on the gym floor and they counted them all. There ended up being 1,451 rings that they counted, and the second graders learned valuable mathematical reasoning skills. Also, the performing arts group Lion Dance NY visited Calvin Lee School in early February. The group shared many Chinese traditions, including the lion dance and its connection to the celebration of the Lunar New Year, the red ribbon dance, Kung Fu, and dances from the northern parts of China. Students enjoyed the performances and connected to what they had been learning about how some Calvin Lee families and families around the world celebrate Lunar New Year. Thanks to the PTO for that. And it's like you guys said, at GHS, there have been a ton of music concerts. Music in Motion is this coming Wednesday. It's the wind ensemble, the jazz band, the symphony orchestra, the voices, it's all of them together. The NHS carnation sale's going awesome. And I believe there's a relief fund that's been set up for the Turkey and Syria earthquake. It was started a few days ago by students around the building. There was a table at lunch today.
Yep.
They're donating the funds to families in need on the other side of the world.
Wonderful. So welcome.
If I can just add, Little Shop of Horrors is...
Yes. I just, I was literally going to ask, it is, it's a Little Shop of Horrors, right? Is that playing?
Late March.
And the casting looks terrific, I gotta say.
It really does.
Thumbs up on the casting. And Ruby, the gala was the mastery-based diploma project presentation, right? Essentially. And did you feel like it was well-attended? Were you...
I did. I really did, because I saw, I mean, I saw parents and actually past students who recently graduated, who did participate, like there was students who graduated last year who were walking in the runway. So it was, it was really interesting.
Yeah, that's terrific.
I got to listen to Ruby's presentation.
Oh, did you?
I did. I came and I got, it was like, some kids were out in the commons at tables, but then they had kids in groups of like four presentations per classroom. You kind of zoomed through, so I got to sit through part of hers. It was great.
Yeah, I got to stop in briefly at the gala. It was, it was cool to see all the projects they had made.
Yeah.
They were all really excited to share their projects, like everything they worked so hard on.
That's great. That's great. And that would be something then, assuming it's the same process that you would be doing next year. Okay. Terrific. Excellent. Any other questions for our student reps tonight? Well, wonderful. Thank you so much. It'd be great to hear all the wonderful things. And I'm always so pleased that our students are among the many things they're paying attention to, finding ways to support others. So great to hear about the multiple ways that various organizations and students are doing that. So thank you for that as well.
And the Wednesday night event is a new thing. It's a new music department fundraiser. It's for Meals on Wheels, and so they're going to have like hors d'oeuvres out in the commons, and you can make a donation, whatever you'd like, and they're going to have dancers from different local dance studios, so it's going to be, hopefully, a lot of the public will come out. You don't just have to be a parent to come.
Right.
That's kind of the goal.
Everyone's excited.
Excellent. Well, wonderful. As I say every, every time, you're welcome to stay. We also understand how busy you are, so if you need to exit, that's fine too, but thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You too.
All right. We are up to the superintendent's report, so Dr. Freeman, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you. And I do have a fairly brief report this evening. First, I want to start by noting that the board at this point has completed your work on the budget. I want to start by thanking this board for all of the time and effort and energy and thoughtfulness that went into completing and approving that final budget. I want to thank the business office, particularly Mr. Bowden and Mrs. Trudeau for their time and effort that went into that work, Mrs. Han and Mrs. Fiandella for all...
into that work. Mrs. Han and Mrs. Fiandella for all of their work in preparing the materials and distributing the materials. I specifically want to thank our district leadership team this year. I know at the very beginning of this process, I mentioned to you, the board, that this was a more team-based and collaborative approach to building the budget this year. So rather than meeting with individual principals and silos, the team worked more on putting this budget presentation together. I was excited about those changes. And specifically, I want to thank the community once again for participating in the budget process, whether they attended a public hearing, or came to board meetings, or just followed along on local TV or on YouTube. It really is important to have the community involved, so they see the evolution of our budget, not just a dollar figure at the end. With that, with the board's work done, that budget now moves to a presentation this Thursday, February 16th, to the Board of Finance. The Board of Finance will be receiving the Board of Ed's budget, as well as the Selectman's or the Town's budget. And then there is a public hearing where those budgets are brought out publicly to the entire community on March 7th at 7:30 PM at the community center, followed by a workshop meeting of the Board of Finance on March 9th, where they will finalize that complete town budget. If the 9th isn't enough time, there is a second workshop meeting scheduled for March 13th. So all I want to thank all involved for the work done so far. I also want to encourage continued participation in these budget, this budget process as we move forward. And again, it's a lot of meetings, it's a lot of time. It is one of the most important set pieces that we address every year. I just want to thank the board and the community again for all the work that went into it.
Absolutely. Absolutely. And we had the opportunity, I think, last week, but again, to Mrs. Trudeau and Mr. Bowden in their offices for extraordinary amount of number crunching and answering all our questions.
It's a lot of work you share. And again, it's a team effort.
Yep.
I'm also excited to share some continuing developing good news, specifically around the topic of open choice as we move forward. The board is aware, I want to remind the community, that a year ago, in last year's legislative session, Guilford lobbied and had legislation changed at the state level to allow Guilford to participate in the open choice program that is centered around the New Haven area. This open choice program allows school districts like Guilford, who have space available in classrooms, to offer seats to students who come from the New Haven area, so that students who might not necessarily hold a Guilford address can attend our Guilford Public Schools. Those students become Guilford Public School students once they join. The state has a program in place where they will provide transportation and provide offsetting dollars for the seats that we provide, for the seats that we make available to those New Haven students who will come and join us as Guilford students. We have been looking at this for some time. We began looking into this opportunity pre-pandemic. We received a significant amount of encouragement from community members who wanted to see us participate in this opportunity. We held on that because of the pandemic. We felt that the timing wasn't right. At this point, I am excited to let the board and the community know that we are feeling prepared to begin to move forward with this opportunity. Mr. Bowden and Dr. Goss met with representatives from ACES just last week to begin putting the initial logistical planning in place. I'm really excited to share that Mr. Grimm was one of the representatives from ACES who came to work with us. And he's going to continue to work with us as we roll this opportunity forward. The timeframe that we are envisioning is that in the second half of this school year, we will have public presentations from both ACES and the local administration here in Guilford to share with you, the board and the community logistically what this program looks like, how it works, and specific numbers, and, and how we see this program working. We will spend next school year putting the planning in place, both by reaching out to families in New Haven, letting them know a little bit about Guilford and who we are and what opportunities we can offer, as well as planning with our elementary school principals, teachers, and communities, so that they're prepared, so that they know what to anticipate. We envision offering the first seats to these students in September of '24, where we will begin by offering elementary seats only in the first year, targeting the first grade. In the following year, we'll offer first-grade seats again, continuing to grow that opportunity, and also offer seats at the fifth grade. And then in our third year, while we continue to move those students forward, we offer first and fifth-grade seats again, but also ninth-grade seats. So while it will be a slow start, it will be an invitation that we hope increases fairly rapidly. It will help us to broaden our Guilford community. It'll help us to diversify our student body. It will benefit all of the students involved. And again, it is based on a seats-available calculation. Offering these opportunities will not, will not require us to add staff, increase budget. It is seats that we have available that we can offer to students who can benefit by being part of our community and who will bring benefits to this community by being part of our community. So again, that's a little bit of a teaser, but we are excited to be taking the first significant concrete steps forward. I also just want to make sure that I thank Sean Scanlon. When it was time to, when we realized legislation did not allow Guilford to participate, we reached out to Sean. We made clear what the, what the challenge was. And he wrote the amendment that allowed us to see this change in legislation, to offer this opportunity up to Guilford and to the students who we envision inviting in the future.
Excellent.
It's really exciting news.
That's great.
Questions?
You mentioned a night where ACES and the leadership team will be presenting this. When would that be?
We're expecting that to either be a workshop Board of Education meeting, or one of your regular meetings. And I want to talk to the board, while we're not in the habit of recording and broadcasting our workshop meetings, should we target the March or April workshop meeting for that? I think it will be important that we record that meeting and that we make those conversations available asynchronously to the whole community and not expect people to be able to come out for that one specific two hours in order to learn about this opportunity.
Got you.
Is it, it may be premature to ask if, you just talked about the rollout, first grade, then first and fifth, then first, fifth, and ninth. Once this program is, what I'll say, kind of well-integrated, would a student, again, space available, who moved to Connecticut and is a 10th grader, be considered if they, you know, is there a thought process on how that would work? Or is the idea that, that we want kids to be able to start at the beginning of a?
Yeah, we're sort of targeting those transitional times. And so I think that's an important question. I think we need to talk to our partners at ACES. Those are exactly the kinds of logistics that we will take this next year to, to clear up. We also have really good examples of other school systems that have done this really well, particularly around the greater Hartford area. And part of what we will be doing next year is inviting teachers from those really successful districts to meet with our teachers in Guilford, to talk about the things that you do that work well, the pitfalls that you need to be cautious of. There have been other situations where these opportunities are embraced, and people make the mistake of thinking it's simple, and then you end up putting people in awkward positions.
It has to be very thoughtfully. It's a great idea, and it's great when it's implemented well.
Yeah, we want to be slow and cautious and do it really, really well. We will be working with Dr. Harrison. We will be working with other districts that have done it well. We'll be working with our partners at ACES. And really excited that Mr. Grimm is going to be part of that team who helps us roll this out.
That's great. Other questions?
Dr. Fiemen, I know it'll be first graders and then fifth. Are these students then offered to do after-school activities, too? Or is the transportation piece limited, like, you know, like, so a fifth grader could do a club, and then in ninth grade, obviously, a sport or something like that? So would that all get worked out?
Yes, they will be offered those opportunities. And you're exactly right, transportation is one of those challenges. The state will provide us with transportation at the end of the school day. And so for students who want to participate in those activities, we need to figure out whether we expect the parent to make the drive and provide transportation, or if we can use, and I've seen other districts do it this way, some of the funds that the state puts in, the state provides funds based on the size of the enrollment population. Some districts earmark a portion of those state funds to provide after-school activity transportation as well. So in addition to the bus that runs at the end of school dismissal, they provide a second bus that runs later in the afternoon for students who do want to stay and participate in clubs and activities. Again, there's a lot of best practice that we need to dig into. I will be asking the board to take formal action on this and to approve this plan before the end of this school year. That then gives us the true green light to answer those questions and dig into those details next year. So again, this is something that we want the community to know about. We want everybody to understand. And we will ask you, the board, to take formal action before this year closes, so that next year can be a successful planning year.
Very exciting.
It is really exciting and, and long-delayed.
Wonderful. All right. We are up to the board agenda. 9.1 is to act on personnel items. So first, I'm going to ask for a motion to ratify the appointment of the following teacher, Alexa Venegas. I hope I pronounced that somewhat correctly. Cox Elementary School, grade one teacher. Is there a motion to approve this appointment?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
That's everybody? Okay, thank you. And then is there a motion to ratify the resignation for the purpose of retirement of the following teachers? I note the dates across the board for these four people are June 30th, 2023. Polly Leclair, Baldwin Middle School Special Education Teacher, 36 years of service in Guilford. Linda Howe, Guilford High School Special Education Teacher, 13 years of service in Guilford. Diane Stevens, Adams Middle School Science Teacher, 19 years of service in Guilford. And Lynn Arnold, Adams Middle School Science Teacher, 22 years of service in Guilford. So it's extraordinary number of combined years.
Ninety years.
To Guilford Public Schools. Is there a motion, then, to ratify the resignation of these four individuals for retirement?
Some of them.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
That's everyone. All right. And I'm sure they will...
With our thanks.
Yes, our thanks for, for all that service. 9.2 is to act on approval of pre-K tuition rates for the 2023-24 school year. Last year, the board was asked to consider an increase in tuition for the current year we're sitting in. We've been asked again to consider an increase in tuition for the 23-24 school year, a 10% increase in tuition, which would bring full-day costs for a student to $6,589, and half-day cost to $3,023. We will note that these amounts continue to be significantly lower than, than, than most pre-K, pre-K opportunities for people in the town. So this, this is again a request made to us. Is there any, first of all, let me ask for a motion to approve this increased tuition for the 23-24 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion, comments, consideration? This is a wonderful program. It's a program that, that parents regularly are hoping to get their children into. We are certainly happy to support it and, and understand the need to, to make it financially viable. And so I'm going to ask, we have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Hi.
Terrific. All right. We are going to table 9.3 on the agenda, because the expulsion hearing relevant to this is on hold. Reports of committees. Does a policy committee have anything to report out tonight?
We do not.
All righty. Operations committee, do you have any, anything else, Mr. Bowden?
You know, I'll just add that we, we received an encouraging dining services report, but then went into discussion about some state legislation around free meals, in which is awaiting the governor's signature at this point. And so hopeful that that'll all go through, and we could be talking about free lunches for our students for the remainder of the year. So other than that, another very healthy facilities report, very busy the team, as always. And obviously discuss the importance of our pre-K services and just, you know, how that 10% is well-needed, but also just how, how strong that, that service is.
Excellent. Curriculum Instruction Assessment Committee.
Nothing to report.
Anything to report out? Liaisons to Town Committees, anything to report out? And I don't think anyone attended the Learn Board of Directors this past month. Is that accurate? Okay. We are up to public questions on the agenda. Again, we don't have any of the public in the room with us tonight. So we will pass that agenda item, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn for this evening.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. All right. Good night to those of you watching. Thank you for joining us.
See that, even with me here, we got it down.